Good evening, welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, January 14th, 2025, now Colorado 7:00 PM. This meeting is being recorded and broadcasted live by local access programming. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight recording this meeting? Being none, please rise and join us in the salute to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which we stand, one nation, under God.
This time, I would like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, East of Planning Board members to complete refrain from asking questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening without first being granted my consent. First item on our agenda tonight is applicant Auburn Water District requesting site plan approval under section 3.2.4.3 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a water treatment facility at 98 Pine Valley Drive, Auburn, Mass., map 63, parcel 23. They have requested a continuance to our next meeting. May I have a motion to continue?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
None?
Aye.
Myself, John Reed, and I as a vote. Next on the agenda tonight is applicant Mass Futures LLC requesting site plan approval under section 3.2.2.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for 21 two-family dwelling condo development at 25 Vinyl Street, Auburn, Mass., map 10, parcel 78. I know you're here, so go ahead, Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Trying to make this bigger, did I do it? Maybe. Anyway, Todd Broder here on behalf of the applicant. We've got the whole project team here with us tonight to talk to you about 25 Vinyl Street. It's been a little bit since we have been in front of you, so just bring you back to the beginning. We're proposing 42 residential units, which this would be a condo development, 21 duplexes, two units each gets you to 42 units. It's in the Residence A zoning district. We do have a big pocket of wetlands that we're working around, so it kind of indicated where the site would be developed and just getting you to a more interesting plan. So this is the overall site plan. So since we last were before you, which I believe was November, we've completed our zoning board of appeals process, received our special permit for the use, received a special permit for rendering more than 15% impervious in the Aqua for Two overlay district. We're about 18% or something like that. And we've received Conservation Commission approval because there's work in the buffer zones, particularly along the driveway area where it's where it gets gets a little close there. So all those processes are, you know, completed at this point. You're the last stop on this tour. With you, we've been here at least once before, maybe twice. I think Garrett was telling me we were here twice. And we've addressed the Graves Engineering peer review letter that was initially a letter from November. They've now seen an updated set of plans, which was issued in December, and Graves has issued a review later, letter dated January, just a week or so ago. There's one issue on there, which I think Garrett will talk to you about. It's just the location of a light pole. One of the poles was initially located in a detention area, and that was thought to be not a very good place to put a light pole. So there's a slight deviation between the lighting plan and and the other sheets on the plan set, but I think Garrett can can illustrate for you where where that is, what impact it might have, and if it's of any concern, we can talk more about it. So, you know, we have, Garrett's going to talk to you about the plan changes that we've made since we were last here. We did address, you know, the the board had a number of comments on some details that have been addressed, and hopefully you can see those on the plans. We dropped a full set of full-size set of plans over there between between you folks. I know John has one. And, you know, we've got, you know, we've got the team here to answer any questions that might come up, but I think I'll just turn it to Garrett for a few minutes to just to talk about the the site plan.
Todd, Garrett horse fall with Kelly Engineering Group. So last time we were before the board, we did represent this revised layout plan, which represents the major comment brought up in the Graves review and partially comments brought up by this board. Main changes were adding the, you know, 22-foot wide or long driveway space and a looped sidewalk around the entire development to connect back into the sidewalk along the main drive out to the Vinyl Street public way. So what that did was essentially shift the development to the north, north and east inbound of the site. So we have gone through and revised all of the applicable grading, drainage, utility locations, and associated drainage calculations with those changes and have adjusted the drainage locations, the subsurface drainage systems and sizes associated with that adjustment that needed to be made as part of that design change. And additionally, we did some of the comments that were raised here and through various peer review comments. We did enlarge snow storage areas throughout the site. The lighting plan, as Todd had mentioned, was submitted. If I can. Sure. Thought it was more just trying to get the curse. Show the light location.
He's a touchpad.
It's fine. This plan's fine. So the 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 main, the outstanding comment in the Graves letter, the first unit on the left, if you were to drive in, the the subsurface detention system located there, the lighting plan showed a light light pole within the subsurface recharge system. So we we had shifted that to the easterly side of the driveway just to not be in conflict with with the subsurface recharge system there. So that was the main shift, and I believe there was one other lighting comment, and that light pole is shown on the remaining sheets. There's just a text masking on the sheet, sheet five, that Graves had referenced in their letter. We have gone through and updated the sewer lateral sizes. Main's eight inch, the lateral sizes serving the houses would be six inches as required by the sewer department. The pump station has been moved into the grassy area as recommended by this board for maintenance purposes. It's a large enough area that'll be appropriate for this large tank and pump system that will have to be placed here to to serve the flow demand for this development. And then the various, there were details brought up, I believe, the chair here. We did our best to incorporate those comments that you had into that revised set. And I believe that in the other peer reviews that we did get were land disturbance permit comments from the town engineer. There is a response to comments letter that we issued back regarding that. Their main comment relative to how this reflects this plan, there was a, the subsurface system, when you first drive in at the beginning of the site on the left, the catch basin associated with that, the first one on the left, we had originally bypassed the subsurface system with that just because typically sometimes towns don't want to be have an easement or drainage easement over that because their, you know, drainage would be flowing into that. So they requested that we move that catch basin onto our lot and then connect that drainage into the subsurface system. So that has been worked in and as well as the other comments that I believe Ms. Williamson had in her letter. And then there were various of the department comments. Sewer department had comments. We've addressed some of those. The remaining comments we will have to address during final design stages when we engage with a pump manufacturer designer for the final details of the pump station. But we do believe a majority of the comments have been addressed, and we're glad to answer any questions the board may have.
Anybody on the board have any questions? Anybody on the board have any questions? John, do you have any questions?
This may be just backing up, and apologies for that. But I understand the project is intended to be phased in as units are sold. What does the phasing look like?
Tim, do you want to chime in, or I don't know how you intend to.
Tim Johnson, 25 Vinyl. So we're going to be basically looking to do about six buildings at a time, but that is also going to be probably, it's going to be two, and then two months down the road will be two more, or a month and a half down the road. But it's going to be about six, so 12 units at a time.
And moving from the front back, or?
Yeah, we're gonna start here and go.
Okay, great, thanks. No other questions?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I had a question on number four on page three. It says provide the location of the stockpile areas. Would that be snow storage, or is that?
No, that's dirt storage.
What is it?
That's dirt storage.
Dirt storage. Thank you.
Gorgeous.
Yeah. Thank you, John. Thank you, Garrett. I have just maybe a couple of questions, maybe clarification. One is, I think, so based on this site plan, you have one entryway and one exit, right? It's the same entry-exit to the property. Is that, has that been reviewed by the fire department? Is that, because given that you have a number of dwellings here, is that okay to have this one entryway?
Yes, we've met internally with the fire department. The fire department has received copies of this plan. We haven't received any departmental comments from them, but to our understanding, they're satisfied with the access as shown.
I've requested comments several times from the fire department, and they didn't respond with anything, so.
Then the other question was maybe just another clarification. So today, the existing property has one, like one apart, one house, right?
That, yes, correct. It's an old, single-family home.
So would, now that you have 42 units, what happens to the utility? So if National Grid is serving this 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 development, do they have to make significant changes? How are they serving the existing, or serving this property with the existing infrastructure they have?
So in terms of utilities, we have reached out to the, we had a meeting with the water department, I believe back in November. The applicant actually met with them individually regarding the water demand, there's, you know, sufficient water within the area. National Grid, we even have to submit a work order with them. I'm not aware of any gas issues in the area, but, you know, we'd have to, you know, update the gas main into the site, out to the public way, to the main and the road through a work order submitted with them.
So just another clarification. So these are 42 units. Are these, these are not single-family homes? These are townhomes?
These would be duplexes, two units per, two units per building.
And what we have today is on the site is a single-family home, right?
Correct.
Not really much of a home anymore. It's been half torn down, gutted. They're going to raise it, so.
Thank you.
Jason?
Yeah, just a quick question on the phasing, construction phasing. So I'm assuming you're going to do one unit, well, one building at a time every month and a half or so, but are you going to do all the infrastructure first, like at least access road first, or? Okay. Well, no, yeah, I just wondered, like, kind of what's your game plan in terms of site work first?
Yeah, so we're going to be putting all the utilities in and trying to get base of the paving all the way around because we have to have all the utilities in before we sell any of the homes because nobody can occupy without having the pump station set up and so forth. So basically, all utilities will be placed and run before people are able to occupy the houses anyway. So all all utilities will be run, and they'll basically be set up as pads at that point.
And then what's your construction schedule looking like? Pending approval, obviously.
Pending approval? I mean, we're probably still about a month out. You know, could be a little bit sooner if we can get this moved on, but there is a review period that we have to wait for. So pretty much we're ready to roll as soon as that's ready to go.
In the letter sent to Emma Williamson of the Town of Auburn, Department of Public Works on page four, was the remark made by Graves is our recommendation that any improvement to Vinyl Street provide a crown on the road. The response is all modifications on Vinyl Street are within the right of way. That doesn't answer the question. You're going to crown your road, not going to crown your road?
It's not crowned. It's just slope to one side to provide drainage.
What's the slope across the road?
2%, it's a 2% cross slope.
And the letter sent to the Town of Auburn on page two, comment five, in regards to trash pickup. Last sentence says it is anticipated that each unit will have a trash recycling receptacle. It can't be anticipated, it has to happen. I can anticipate a million dollars tomorrow, you know, I get it.
So?
It's not right.
Through Tim, each unit will have, you know, if you want.
So, so I think, you know, sometimes when we use those words in describing things, it doesn't sound as suggest, it doesn't sound as permanent as it should be, but that's what's, that is what is, that is what is going to happen. These will be private service pickup. It's not town, it's not town service. They have to, you know, provide the, you know, there'll be, there'll be an account with some local provider that will pick up trash and recycling. Sometimes they have a different bin system than Town of Auburn. Sometimes it's very similar, so, you know, we have to see what exactly what that looks like. So whether they'll have, you know, multiple recycle bins, that sort of thing, we don't, we don't know yet. You know, that that part of the contract, you know, wouldn't have been discussed yet at this point.
I understand what you're saying, Todd, and I'm not going to tell you, you're not telling me the truth, but it still says anticipated.
Sure.
That'll change. I want to see something that says will happen to that effect.
Make it a condition of your approval, that's fine.
On sheet four. Now, the end of the dark black line on the, toward the bottom of the page, start retaining wall and six-inch high vinyl fence, six-foot high vinyl fence. It says the road's 20 feet wide there. Is that within your land, or is that still in the town? Because the black line that goes across with the property line, I assume, doesn't tell me what it is, starting new tree line. That's what it says.
That the, that is in the private right of way.
20 feet is?
Yes, where we're tapering it.
Well, it's not much of a taper because it's straight for what, 200 feet, 300 feet anyway?
It's within, off of our private land, but that section is the private right of way. That is where we're 20 feet.
Right, and we request the 24 feet, which you did everywhere else except for there. I don't know why, when you get to the end of Vinyl Street as it stands, you don't just fan right out to 24 feet. Is there a problem putting 24 feet there? Because the sooner you get 24 foot width, the better fire protection you have, the better medical services you have, better police protection you have, and better for buses. Because I don't know if the bus is going to stop at the end of Vinyl Street or have to go through the neighborhood to pick up the kids.
It can be done. It can be widened. It's just going to increase it four feet into the driveways of the existing butters there, the existing curb cuts that they have into.
Why can't you do it four feet on the other side? What's not in their land?
That's the, that's the town property where the sidewalk is proposed.
And the homeowner owns up to the, where it says start CCB conformed to existing?
So the, I think the the issue that that you're picking up on is the fact that, sorry, I thought you could see it on this plan, but the. The neighbors in the rear there, you know, on the opposite side of the town land have made improvements into the private way and we're trying not to disturb that, those improvements. In instance, it's a fence, and in instance, it's a piece of the garage. There are, there are, you know, there are overreaches by the neighbors into that private way with some, with some level of permanency. So when we looked at this initially, we were trying to avoid disrupting what they may have there or or any kind of access that they may have there because two of those neighbors use that that area of Vinyl Street for their access. So we left it alone. We put the five-foot sidewalk as close, you know, that that leads up to town land. So it's town land, five-foot sidewalk, 20-foot right of way, neighbors.
Okay, so you know where you have the gate?
Currently.
Currently?
Yes.
Is that where your property starts or start further up?
Yeah, it's roughly, it's about, yeah.
No houses past the gate?
When I talk, past the gate, we've, we've gone out to 24 feet. It's, it's, it's what.
What I'm asking, Todd, is where the gate is. How far in front of that gate does your property actually start?
Sure, Tim, do you know? Four feet, Tim says.
Four feet?
Yes. So we've fanned it out as soon as we have total control over that area on our property, we fanned it out to 24 feet. The areas that are subject to, you know, the the neighbors and their involvement in that area, that's where it's 20 feet. It's 20 feet now.
You know, I know it's 20 feet now. I'd have to look at that.
Past Nancy Drive.
Think on the top line.
Yeah, it's, it's actually, Mr. Chairman, it's 20 feet out to the point where Nancy Drive links up with Vinyl.
Right, but that's town.
That's town land. I mean, that's a town road for a portion of that. So the town road is 20 feet wide.
I understand, Todd.
Okay.
I don't want 24.
And we're giving you 24 everywhere where we control.
On sheet five, layout plan. Bottom right corner of unit 41, where you have the visitor parking. See radius equals 31.5 feet. I don't see a radius there. I see a right, almost a right angle.
The the radius for the inbound of the the curb?
The inbound of the curb, the radius is 50, and you don't show, what I'm really asking is right there at the corner of the pavement, just to the left of the arrow, is that where the pavement comes out square? And then that radius refers to the radius from that end of the black line out to meet the radius of 50 feet? You know what I mean?
The the radius of 31.5 is referring to the radius associated with the end of the parking space?
Well, you can't see it because you have a vegetation drawn over it.
Oh, that that radius, that would be a typical radius. What do we have that here? Five-foot radius, I can, you know, we can add more notes, but that that is, that is, you know, this.
I don't know, I mean, you could put a dotted line through the, where the vegetation is to show what that pavement or curve line shows. It's all Cape Cod berm anyway, correct?
Yeah, it's all Cape Cod berm on that side.
And he showed a planting legend, and he only named the the London plane tree. Has anybody done any research for this tree, a landscape architect? They go to 70 to 100 feet tall. They have, they have fruit, and their bark falls off as it grows. So to me, it's a messy tree to put there. And my next question was, these trees are going to have huge root lines. Are they going to disturb the roadway, the sidewalk wherever they're near? Eventually, that's going to happen, and every architect does it because they don't care, landscape architect. They're going to grow, and they're going to disrupt the sidewalk, and then the poor homeowner is going to have to worry about, and HOA is going to have to worry about repairing the sidewalk, or they have to cut down the tree. It's a very, very, very messy tree. I would suggest something else.
If there is a suggestion that you would like to see, we're happy to incorporate that. This did come up the other day at Conservation. We asked them if they wanted to do a certain species, and they get back to us. Well, they asked for a different species, more native, and they were going to come back to us with a certain species. So I believe possibly in the order of conditions, they might have a species or ask, have us coordinate with landscape architect to, you know, specify a species that they would like to see.
She says, and then the bushes on the left or the right of it? What are those? Because it's not in your planting legend.
That is the snow storage areas.
Those are snow storage areas?
Yes.
So on the side of the road where you don't have a sidewalk, you only make the driveways 20 feet. And on the side of the road where you have the sidewalk, you make the driveways 22 feet. Am I correct? Because that's where the scales.
It's 20.
40 and 39, that driveway scales to 20 feet, while the driveway on the other side scales to 22 before the sidewalk, and then you get the five feet for the sidewalk. So it's actually total of 27.
They all, they all should be at 22 feet. I can.
Every house that does not have a sidewalk in front of it scales at 20.
I'll have to look into that, I don't have the, but, you know, the intent is to have 22 feet driveways in every house. If needed, these could be shifted further in.
On sheet seven, sediment erosion control. From unit seven and eight, all the way around the outside of that circle, all the way to 27, 28, isn't that a steep slope up to the bank and in the back?
Yes.
What's going to be put, I know you're going to be in there bulldozers and everything. What are you going to use for erosion control on the steep bank? It doesn't say anything. I couldn't find it in the detail either. It wasn't there. I was asking questions.
So the, the wall is going to be a cut wall into the slope, and they're not going to go past the the back at the tiebacks with the cut wall. So really, you know, see a need for erosion control because we're not going to disturb the whole entire hill.
Well, it's already disturbed, it's half sand. There isn't a lot there. I mean, they've already done some work down there.
If, you know, we'll have straw waddles on site, additional silk sock compost that'll be placed, you know, as needed.
Question is at the end result, if the slope is like this, say it's 30 degrees, where are you going to put on that slope to hold the, not washing into the back of these homes and the roof drain, roof drain system you're putting in?
I just want to clarify, what what has been cleared that now is not where the homes will be. The homes actually have to go back a little bit further than what is cleared. So what is?
You're going to be further into the slope.
It's going to be further into the slope. So we will not, so what's disturbed as of this moment? I lived there, my, you know, for 12 years, I know. So that was, what's disturbed now is not where, you know, we're going to be further into that where the wall will be, where it's undisturbed at the moment. So that has been.
The wall going all the way around that entire?
No, no, just where it shows on the plan, which is.
What sheet is that on?
Sheet, sheet seven has the wall. Sheet nine for the grading plan would probably be the best sheet to look at. So, I mean, it is a heavily vegetated slope past the wall, as Tim said.
We'll go to sheet nine, then we'll come back to sheet nine. Where's the wall? Is the wall, the dark lines behind like 18 and 17, and 13, 12, 11, 10, 9, 8 and 7?
Yes, with the the top of wall, bottom of wall labels associated with it.
Yep. So from, let's say, unit 18, all around the backside of these homes, all the way to 29, there's no wall, but you have a heck of a slope behind there. That's a steep slope.
It's matching the existing grade at the tree line?
No, I understand that, but I know it's going to get disturbed some way or other down the road. A lot of that's sand already. I walked the site. It's not like heavy vegetated or something that's going to hold in a heavy rainstorm. I mean, it's very sandy material down there that I saw. And I was wondering what you were going to put on the slope at the end of the project to hold the slope until the grass grows or whatever vegetation you put in. You going to put in erosion control mat?
Well, in disturbed areas, if that is a concern, we could, you know, add a erosion control mat and blanket. But, you know, outside of the disturbed areas, and that would only be on three-to-one slopes, we'd recommend adding that. But outside of those disturbed areas, we would leave it naturally vegetated so as to not further disturb the hill.
Okay. Back to sheet eight. Right by TP 11, I mean TP number one, the square box for your drainage control. That whole area from Brandon's house all the way down to our first road crossing with your riprap on either side, that entire area is flat, except for where it goes into the catch basin that goes into the, I don't know how you're going to drain that much area if it's flat. I mean, it's, it's a 3% slope if you consider the final grade on the catch basin there to that contour line. It's a 3% slope at 40 feet, and the other one is, it's way more than that. I mean. it's a 3% slope and 40 feet. And the other one is, it's way more than that. I mean, way less slope, but a much greater area. Bring that slope in. So is that the intent? Because when the contours end like that, it's hard to tell what you're put, going to have in the middle. Because the dotted line should be the existing contours, and the dark line should be new contours for your roadway, correct?
Yes. So the two catch basins, I believe you're referring to, um, there is a minimum, you know, 1% slope to those catch basins.
To the catch basin?
Yes.
I'm not talking about the pavement. I'm talking about the pavement to the cover.
I, I don't understand that, that your question at this moment. Um, the pavement to the cover?
Yeah, can you bring it up on the, behind you?
We only have certain sheets on-
Oh, you don't have sheet eight?
Yeah.
Um.
Talking about the pavement, how it's pitched, the pitch of the paint.
It's, it's, it's flat for quite a big area. You got one foot between that catch basin and the contour. I mean, the drain line, the first drain line that goes all the way across the road from riprap to riprap. And then that comes down to the catch basin going to the left on the page, and then it goes back uphill somewhat. You get another catch basin there, that 512, the next 512, uh, contour has to pitch into that. So if this rim is 511, and trying to find the room for the one down below. This one over here.
511 right there. 511, that's a 511.2.
Two. So there's only two tenths. Difference between the two that's in here. Right here. Okay, from here to here is flat. I know what you're getting at.
Tilt.
Well, you don't show pitch. You show a 512 here and a 512 here. That tells me the slopes from here to there. If you say it's a foot, it should be a 511 on this side. So what I'm saying is from here, this drain line here, which is 512, the top of the road, to here is a foot. That's 30 feet. And when you go from here to here, it's only two tenths.
Have a high point set in the middle.
Yeah, about two tenths, because that's 511.2, and it's 511. You don't circle the high point here.
There's a high point at 511 and a half to, to split them.
Okay, so you, so you got six inches. You got three inches this way and three inches, not even three inches that way. That's only three tenths.
Well, in three inches.
Three tenths is, well, it's about three inches, maybe a hair more.
Yeah, three and a half, four.
That's it. But I mean, is, is this going to work? I mean, with a high point and only this much pitch from there to there, I mean, three tenths is pretty good from here to there. But what's the pitch from here to here? Six inches?
50 feet, yeah, yeah, I'm sure.
That's about 50. That's about 50.
And that's 1%.
That's what you're supposed to want. Yeah, 1% would be your standard minimum pitch slope.
I'm going to tell you what the paper is going to do. He's going to tell you to sign off on it. You can't pay with that close. Guarantee that'll happen. It's happened to me before, 1% or less. They'll make a sign up sheet that they're not responsible. So then it drops onto the Home, Home Orders Association down the road when it doesn't work. Okay, so that's my, another concern of mine. So on sheet 10, for your sewer and drain plan. Are you looking at it?
Yeah, I, I have it. Yes.
I thought you'd bring it up in a script. I was waiting for you.
Oh, no, I, I just have a small set for me. Sorry.
So from your force main up, right, I see that you have an air release valve. An air release valve usually goes on a high point. That's not the high point of the line. The high point of the line is where it ends up, where it goes into the town manhole. The 8-inch takes off on the other side. But I don't know how it works in mid-slope. Usually when you put a force main in, you bring it up to a high point, and you pitch it down to the manhole. So you're not getting that thrust against the manhole from the force main. It'll, you'll have enough energy to pump it to the top. It'll want to float by gravity more than by the pump.
That, that is the high point in that section that we added one, and, you know, we do have to talk with the, further coordinate with the sewer department here. Um, if they want to, you know, we can certainly add another check release valve, um, as needed. But, you know, we did set it at that high point, um, associated there.
Well, that says the invert is 50, 5, 507, right? And where you tie in by 14.5. So how is that the high point? That's seven foot difference, seven and a half. So I don't know, I don't understand how that's the high point. I don't know how deep the manhole is here. See, the man is only four feet, I guess, the, the existing manhole. That you're tying into from the town, town armpits manhole. Proposed to a manhole six, I guess that's your manhole. So that's your high point, right there, 514.4. And then it goes down to, uh, the town manhole, which is 512.9 and 512.8. So that's not the high point.
The high, you know, so it's tying in at the highest point at that end manhole.
It ties in at the hi- yes, I understand. But you, when you put an air release manhole in, you put an air release manhole in the high point of a force main, not halfway up the slope. That's what I'm saying. Otherwise, I don't know how it works. I'm sure you know how it works. When the pressure builds up, you get air in the line, and the air release releases the air into the, so it doesn't cause a, um, like a vapor lock, basically.
Well, we're agreeable to add another one in, um, as needed at that, uh, additional high point. Um, like I said, we do have, um, some additional sewer, items to deal with at the sewer department related to the pump in and of itself. So additional force restraints, et cetera. So all that'll be detailed out with them.
And you can tell me if I'm wrong, but out of the details, I didn't see whether or not this manhole was vented. Air release manhole must be vented.
It, it'll certainly be vented, um, for all applicable regulations, um, you know, but I, I just don't really see the detail in front of me at the moment, so.
You're going to tell me it's vented through the cover. That's a no-go. Because they fill up and get plugged up. And I'll tell you what's happened. Westboro on Flanders Road, I put the force main in myself, and did the air release manhole. We asked if we should vent it. They said no. It blew the cover 50 feet in the air about five years later. Because it gets sealed up with all the grit and all that stuff the air can't get out. It pressurized the inside of the manhole. Boom. I'm sure you saw the one that flew up above 290 the other day. Yeah.
I did see that, yes. And, you know, we obviously don't want that to happen.
Electric manhole, but still.
If you would like to see a vent off to the side, you know, uh, certainly, you know-
Yeah, it's usually a vent off the side. It comes up with a candy cane on top.
Similar to a septic system, yeah.
The sewer manholes that are in front of every home, I believe there's two, one for each service. I'm sorry, that's for the roof drains. We have a proposed, like it's, say in front of number 38, on the bottom left corner, rim is 512, invert's 510.5. It's only two and a half feet deep. So my question is, if we get a hard freeze, will that roof drain freeze? For one. And what size is that proposed manhole? Is it just an ADHD plastic one with a metal top or H20 loaded cover top?
You referring to the area drain in front of 38? Is that what you're referring to?
ADH1, 512.5, 510.5, and then it goes right down, ties, the roof drains tie into it, right?
Co- correct.
So that area drain is what? Is it a four-foot diameter, like catch basin?
It's a, um, right now we have, I believe, a two-by-two nylon plaster drain, uh, spec for the yard drain detail, um, sheet 15.
Sheet 15. You know, ductal line, great, that's H25 loading, which is great. But will the HDPE piece that holds that H25 duct line rated for H25 loading?
You're referring to the nylon plaster itself? Well, it, it's not going to be, you know, where it is. It's just in the yard drain. So, I mean, obviously, it doesn't have to be H25 loading. It's just suspected that, um, that really just going to have pedestrians over it or lawn mowers.
Yeah, how much, how much weight can an H25 cover hold? I don't know off the top of my head. I know H20s can handle a pump truck, but-
Well, it's, you know, exceeds the H20, um, you know, maybe it was a five-ton cabaxel, I think, or something.
It says the grade for the cover is, um, H25 ductile. But it doesn't say what the actual, it's going to be an ADS system, I'm sure. So that intake structure right there where the pipe goes through it, will that hold the weight, not of the frame and cover, but I don't know, what kind of, will that hold a lawnmower? Will that hold a car that drives on the lawn? You know what I mean?
Yeah, this is going to be, you know, Schedule 40 PVC for the roof, the, the, um, you know, we put these in all the time with the, you know, a foot of covering yard, yard drain applications.
Okay. Why are we going to sheet 14 then? Um. Your concrete by-tuminous pavement standard is two inches and an inch and a half? It should be two and a half and an inch and a half. Total of four inches, about three and a half. Handle traffic, plowing, all that stuff over time. Otherwise, I know it says super paved, but that really doesn't mean a thing.
And that this has been peer reviewed. Um, we use this pavement application throughout, um, the Commonwealth, um-
I'll tell you, if I pave a road out here for the town, it won't be three, three and a half inches. It'll be four, four and a half. I don't care what the peer review says. I'm just telling you, it should be four, four and a half, four inches anyway. Driveway's three. So you're going to tell me the roadway is only worth an inch and a half more, uh, half an inch more with all the traffic on it? I don't, in plows? I don't think so. It should be four inches.
Well, if, if that is a specific request, um, I think, think we can accommodate that.
Um. Let's see. Well, on your, your riprap sizing, I, I understand that. I agree with it. But I don't know what the slope is from your outlet piece, which I think is just going to be a piece of plastic, but it's supposed to be a head wall, but you know, when it goes down into the pond or the swamp, whatever you want to call it, what's the slope of that? I don't know. It doesn't really show. I'm sure it's going to vary between each one, because you have one with, um, in the very beginning, your first cross piece is a, is, uh, riprap on each side. So it looks like it's draining both ways, but it's either going to go one way or the other. Can't go both ways.
The riprap, we have it matching existing grades so that it just, you know, follows existing drainage patterns to the design point.
But is existing grade, um, too steep? So it's going to create, um, it's not going to wash out the riprap. The riprap's huge.
No, these have been prop- there's been rip, uh, the riprap is sized appropriately for the associated exit velocities, flow rate, pipe size, um-
What I'm asking is after the riprap, when it hits the swamp, is that going to stir it all up?
That, that's-
Too steep.
But that's why the, you know, we've put the riprap in there to fan it out and, uh, spread it out appropriately and dissipate that velocity.
Yeah, but if the riprap's even all the way across, which generally it is, it doesn't do anything to slow down the water. It just keeps it from wearing away. So if you want to slow down the water, you got to have a little height riprap in the middle going down like a zigzag almost. Almost like a fish ladder, but not quite. On your sewer manhole detail on page 15, um, it doesn't say what the penetration is sealed with. It should be a core and sealed boot.
The, the boot, the boot coming in, basically?
Yeah, your, your line in, your, um, your inflow. I don't know, it's, it's just a standard detail, but-
Yeah, we typically would get, you know, submittals from the contractor with the core and seal and approve it at that point.
Spec, they're not going to give it to you.
Sort of.
You got to spec a core and seal boot, they're not going to give it to you. And then you're going to have a leaky, leaky manhole. And then this upper Blackstones, um, process in clean water. That should be a core and seal boot. That's pretty easy. Um, you move over to the ejector station, manhole section. Um, the transition coupling between the ductal line and the PVC, how is that restrained? It just, basically, that's a, that's a dresser coupling that you have there, an adaptive dresser coupling. What restrains that?
Oh, like the, the mega lugs, et cetera, through there you're referring to?
It's not mega lug. It's just a three-inch transition coupling, ductal line to PVC. It's a Schedule 40 PVC. You got ductal line coming out of the, your little pump station. You got the union in the inside. And then you have the coupling right there. It's just a transition dresser coupling. What, what, what's going to restrain that from moving? That's pumping a long way. It's not like a short run.
You're referring to the coupling itself and the-
Yeah. What's going to restrain that coupling from moving?
Oh, oh, okay. I can put a, you know, if there must be a thrust block on, you know, the inside or outside, but, you know, we can spec that as well, but, um-
Believe it or you put a thrust block on the inside or brace that natty grail, but it's not going to keep the couple from moving. How are you going to- How are you gonna restrain the coupling itself?
We'll have to, you know, we'll work with the pump manufacturer on that as well, um, what they recommend.
It's outside his purview, that's outside his purview, all he cares is from inside wall to inside wall. He doesn't care what's on the outside.
But we'll have to further detail that out, um.
Yeah, please do. And then on your ladder going down, it only shows it going down partway. I know that's just standard detail that they put out there, but number one, how do you get from the hatch to the ladder? Cause it's a pretty big swing to get over to the ladder, and then how do you get to the bottom after the last run that's shown on the plan?
So the, the pump station is being, gonna be fully designed out as a package. Um, we've roughsized it, um, for the chamber itself and expect the pump, and once there's a contractor on board, all these, um, you know, the, the package submittal, um, will further have the, you know, the controls, the alarms, the floats, et cetera, and all this, you know, the, the details of it, once we, but, you know, once we get in touch with the Williamson Pump and Motor, for instance, um, you know, we'll work with them and the concrete supplier to, you know, fully develop this, uh, package, but it's really, this is a standard, you know, pump station detail, and there'll be a, a specific detail developed for this pump station.
Okay. Um, they show the float switch is typical, but the bottom were usually low, low, and then low, and then next to usually high, and then ultimate high. On the water and sewer trench detail around the pipe, it says compacted screen gravel, three quarter inch to inch and a half, no inch and a half around the pipe, three quarter only, absolutely. Cause I, I know the sewer main's gonna be PVC. And then I, I know this is a standard detail you put in, it shows the sheeting left in place. What is sheeting fused? I've never seen fused sheeting. I don't know what that is.
It's just fused together, uh, I can, you know.
Seating's either steel or wood lagging. I don't, I don't, I've never seen that before. Let's see. And then on the, um, your details for your Ts, your Ys on the ducted line pipe, your bends, all that stuff, and even on your hydrant setting detail, you should, you should show mega lugs on all mechanical joint fittings. So, and then going back to the rip wrap detail, the rip wrap apron detail, the very top of that, it shows, um, six diameters of the pipe, so if it's an eight inch pipe, it's four feet. If it's a twelve inch pipe, it's sixty, sixty inches, or seventy-two inches.
So that's all, we have that in the table below, the rip wrap sizing table, for the associated lengths, width, and diameter. Um, you know, that's based on the, the, the flow coming out of the pipe, and the, the spec for that is actually the stormwater report, I think those submitted to the town engineer.
So the diameter of pipe here is, that's what the diamond is referring to, correct?
It's the diameter of the stone, the D sub fifty.
Pardon me?
The, the D sub fifty of the stone, the stone.
Detail fifty, I'm looking right below the rip wrap sizing. This is length, width, and diameter. I mean, that's what I have on my sheet fifteen.
Just refers to the, you know, the, the sizing of the stone, that, that.
Okay.
That, that column.
All right. But on the length, is based on the number of diameters, correct?
It's actually based, it's further, correct, and this is a standard detail. If, if we were to not give them rip wrap sizing, you would base it off the size of the pipe. But we've gone through and done the nomograph sizing, um, you know, based on the chart, in that it converts to the length and width here.
Okay, so if it, like I said, if it's a six diameter, it's a four inch pipe, that's twenty-four inches of rip wrap in length.
If, if it were, if it were that size pipe, that would be your standard one without providing specific sizing.
I'm missing something here. If it says six diameters, if it's twelve inch pipe, it's seventy-two inches long, correct? Cause that's what it says, six diameters.
Yes.
Okay. And then, um, it says your rip lap, wrap is laid in a gravel bed in sand, but there's no sand on the detail, it just shows a six inch gravel bed. So I don't know if that, it is meant to be that once you put the rip wrap in, you're filling all the, the voids with sand, which it shouldn't be, it should be filled in with like pea stone or something instead of sand? That's my question.
A bed of sand and gravel that it's sitting on, so, so the rip wraps above the sand, the sand and gravel layer.
You gotta set the rip wrap on a, on a solid base. I get it, but it says it should be set upon a bed of sand and gravel, six inches in thickness. So is it just gonna be like processed gravel, which is, it's fine with me, I'm just trying to figure out the detail.
Very well, I mean, if that's what the contractor wants to submit, it very well could be.
So they submit all these submittals to you?
Sometimes we get submittals and, you know, sometimes it's contractor best practice.
Contractor's best practice depends on the contract. That's all I got, but on the, on the, well, I got one more. On the eye drain detail, where that's only twelve inches down your actual drain line itself below the surface, there's no worry about that freezing in the winter time?
We standardly install this in the yard application throughout, um.
That doesn't answer my question. My question is, will it freeze at twelve inches, it'll freeze, right now, you probably gotta put a frost on the ground, that would be frozen. We got a heavy rainstorm right now and that pipe just froze, and then what happens? It backs up. I'm just asking the question. The first place these people come to in an HOA is to us if there's a problem. And my, my last question for tonight is, your tracking pad at the end, you know when you come out on the vinyl street? What size stone is being used?
Believe we updated that, um, per your last comment at the last meeting, it was three inch minimum, I believe, um, per your comments.
Perfect. I, I went through these, I didn't catch that detail, that's why I was asking the question.
Okay, yeah, I believe it was updated, you know.
Anybody else have any questions? Anybody in the audience have any questions? So I would like to continue this to our next meeting, so we can get all these corrections made, my concerns brought up, you still have to go through the sewer department. You haven't got your land disturbance permit yet, right?
We have not received it, or do you wanna?
It was applied for four months ago, so in honesty, they will give us, but they will not grant it until this is finished. As soon as planning board is done, they said they would grant it, but they cannot grant it without this.
That's odd.
Yep, that was the, per Emma, they said planning board would issue.
I believe what she said, but I know of a lot in town where we disapproved it, and they gave them a land disturbance permit, and they raped the land, so that's why I gassed.
Yeah, that was the only reason.
Um, I would still like to continue this to the next time, so we get our one more board member here, and then make sure all the corrections are made. I know the sewer department has to be, um, dealt with, you're also with the water department.
So Mr. Chairman, on the sewer department, the, the sewer department's comments, you know, we, I can pull out their, their letter, and I don't think they submitted an, an updated letter, but a lot of their, a lot of their comments were to do with the pump station, which as we talked about, it's gonna be designed, you know, later, it's not fully designed. We've given you some idea what the, you know, standard specs might look like, but, you know, that's, that's gotta be a separate permit with them to go through that process. So I don't think we're waiting for the sewer department for anything at this point. They're not gonna issue us a permit, we're not gonna apply for a permit until we're done with you, and then we, you know, start to implement the act.
I'm not asking you to get a sewer permit, I'm asking them to agree to everything you've done. So my next question on the pump station, that's be for the engineer, is that a duplex pump?
Yes, it's, it's a duplex, two pumps, yes.
So they're gonna alternate, there's gonna be control panel there, all that stuff?
Oh yeah, backup generator, this is residential use, so that's what I mean by a pump package. And this is all, I believe, brought up in that sewer department letter, about final electric panels, um, floats, which is.
That's all gonna be above ground on a concrete slab, correct?
Yeah, that's why we have it placed in that larger green area, uh, to accommodate that equipment.
Is that gonna be surrounded with greenery or anything to hide it from the neighbors? I mean, I wouldn't wanna be paying seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for duplex and seeing that right outside my bedroom window.
We'll work with, you know, Tim, yeah.
I mean, you gotta hide that somehow.
I would, I would absolutely think that, yes. But we, we're, we're trying to make a nice project out of it, so the reason, the reason that I haven't, you know, gone through to get a, another pump design, or, you know, I've already spent hundreds of thousands of dollars, in all due respect, we, that will get done to town standards. I have met with the DPW personally multiple times, and they were under the understanding, when this gets approved, then we can move forward with that design, that is in accordance with the file.
So when you move forward the pump station design, number one, it's gotta go through the sewer department. Now, does that, is that being reviewed by the DPW as well for like air release manholes and all that stuff?
I don't know exactly what they review, but they, they do review thoroughly whatever comes in form.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, I, I appreciate, we appreciate all the, all the comments, all the feedback. You know, we, again, with the sewer department, we, we'll, we'll work, we'll work through that. I, I wrote down a handful of comments, which you, you mentioned, you know, as you went through, talking about, you know, the, the air, add the air release valve and, you know, vent, vent the air release manhole and things of that nature. I think, you know, we, we'd make a, we'd make a little bit of a request that we, we not continue the hearing until the next meeting, and that we simply provide a site plan approval with conditions that you might articulate. We've articulated them throughout the, throughout your, your discourse with us tonight, we can handle all these issues. They don't, they're technical issues, they're not, you know, none of, none of these, none of these issues are particularly earth shattering in terms of what the site will look like, uh, and what the setup is, and things I think that we would typically develop as we do go closer to, um, you know, starting construction and implementation of such. It'll make for a better set of plans if we put these things in, we can do them as conditions of approval, that's fine. We can always update the plans as a condition of the approval and submit a revised set of plans to you in accordance with those conditions. You can, we, we're happy to do that, we just, we, we would like to try to move along here.
I understand, I do understand, but my next question is, what are we doing about the intersection of Vinyl Street and North Oxford and Pinehurst Ave?
Sure. So we, when our, our traffic consultant, you know, reviewed everything, and he's here tonight, I'm happy to turn it over to him if you wanna hear, but we suggested a stop bar, and it, and I think we talked about this at the last meeting, I can't remember.
Right.
And I think I have a couple slides, but I'll, you know, if we wanna get, you know, deeper into this, we can.
Yeah.
We can talk about it. That's a little, I don't know why it's a little. My technical expertise is limited. But we talked about a stop bar, and there was discussion about, you know, the town was in the process, and I don't know if it's, if it's gotten anywhere with looking for state, state grant funding to look for an overall improvement plan. The stop bar would allow for, you know, for better access and.
Here's my problem with the, the tip grant, Todd, you know that's not gonna cover everything, and the rest of the money comes out of my pocket, now you're in my pocket fixing that intersection. I'm not willing to pay for them to put a, uh, development in for their convenience and their profit, when I'm the one that's gonna pay for the intersection and everybody else on this board, and everybody else in this town. Why should the town taxpayer supplement them to build their development so they can make millions of dollars, and then we wind up with a bill for millions of dollars to fix an intersection?
Mr. Chairman, respectfully, I suggest the intersection needs to be worked on today, whether this improvement, this project moves forward or not, right? And that is a taxpayer obligation, yes, this project would benefit from a better design potentially.
Grant, if the butts like candy nuts and every day be Christmas, who's gonna get it?
The current conditions exist, though, without this project, this, this project is.
But the project makes it worse.
Well, why don't we, why don't I have, why don't I have Sean run through what our traffic study shows and what it doesn't show?
Good evening, Chairman Regan and members of the board, uh, for the record, Sean Kelly with Chapel Engineering. Um, I'm not sure how much of the study you, you've seen and gone through, and I, I apologize that it's, um, slides are so, is there a way to zoom in on this? Or is it? Yeah, this may be difficult, but we've done a, a full traffic study where we looked at, um, obviously the intersection of Oxford with Vinyl, and also the other side with Pinehurst, where it comes in at the Y intersection. Uh, we went out, we did traffic counts, we looked at the volumes, uh, we adjusted those volumes to account for growth in traffic, both background growth as well as developments that were identified in consultation with, with Dr. Menard. Um, we've looked at the traffic that the project itself will generate, um, and these are, these are relatively low volumes. Um, you know, the, the biggest impact in terms of traffic exiting Vinyl Street would occur during the, the morning peak hour. We're looking at, you know, twelve exiting vehicles, so it's, it's a trip every five minutes. Um, in the evening peak hour, the volumes exiting are, are lower, we're looking at about eight trips per hour coming out, so the, the increase in traffic that we add to the intersection of, of Vinyl with Pinehurst and Oxford is fairly minimal compared to what's out there today. We, we do recognize that there are some issues, um, really prominently in the PM peak hour. Um, and that's, it's unclear, we've looked at video of this, I've watched it for more, more time than I want to admit, but ultimately in the, in the evening peak hour, the traffic that comes down Oxford Street southbound, that makes the bend to get into the little short storage area, if you will, before turning left onto Pinehurst, um, typically backs up the street, and it, and if you, if you watch the video, uh, it, it appears to come in waves. I mean, there are some periods where the traffic moves fairly regularly, and then there's just periods where there's a, a glut of traffic, if you will, that comes through. Did note that there was, you know, some vehicles that appear to be a certain, you know, uh, red trucks, and maybe a, and some business up there that lets out at a certain time, but certainly there's no denying that that traffic, um, comes from the, the stem of the, or the, the mid-block between the Y and bends around the corner and goes up Oxford Street northbound. But what happens today is that when people wanna get off of Vinyl Street, um, typically they do so by what we call courtesy gaps, which is someone coming down Oxford Street approaching that intersection, sees someone at Vinyl Street, and they, they basically stop short and, and wave them out and let them come into the, to the traffic stream, and that's typically how it works during the evening hour, and I can, I can see that.
If there ain't a driver in the world, you let somebody out of Vinyl Street, this is Massachusetts, nobody gives a shit about the guy coming out of the side street, they wanna get where they wanna go.
With all due respect, uh, Mr. Chairman, I've, I've watched the video, I'd be more than happy to bring video to the next hearing if the need be to, to document that.
Have you gotten a video where it backs up past, um?
Oh, absolutely, there's no. The, the, the queue today comes around the bend and goes up the street, and it, and it's, it's a number of cars during the evening peak hour, and no one's denying that, we certainly aren't. What we're trying to do is, is in the interim condition, before the town or state does a, a large scale improvement here, and honestly, that improvement at this time is undefined. Um, if, if, if the warrants were met, perhaps the, the ultimate solution here is to have a traffic light in place.
Right.
If the warrants aren't met, the solution might be to have a.
Here's my concern, though. This is pending in the future.
Right.
So if this doesn't happen for ten years, we gotta put up with all the extra traffic there without a corrected intersection for their convenience.
Right, and I, and I just, again, I, I think it's important to note two things. Um, this really is a PM peak condition, you know, in the morning peak hour, you don't see the level of delays and queuing that you would typically see, um, in the evening peak, so it's the traffic that's coming down Vinyl Street, down Oxford Street, rather making that turn into the bend and then making that left, those left turn volumes are about double what they are in the evening as they are in the morning. And furthermore, the traffic on Pinehurst itself, where they're trying to get gaps in, is also significantly higher in the PM peak. During the PM peak, most of the traffic coming to this project isn't leaving Vinyl Street. People aren't, you know, going to work at five in the afternoon, they're coming home from work. So ultimately, the, the, the location of this site and the traffic patterns that are well established for commuter traffic work in our benefit, because most of our traffic is, is coming home in the evening, not going out. We add a total of, uh, We add a total of, uh, in the evening peak, six trips coming out of Vinyl Street across that intersection into the short period, into that short area. So that's a total of six.
I hear adding at least 82 cars to the place.
I'm sorry?
But now we're adding at least 82 vehicles to this.
No, we add six. When, when we do these.
The developer's not done, is what I'm trying to say. You got six now, you get a small neighborhood, you're putting in.
No, I'm, I'm saying that this project adds six vehicles to that intersection under the bill condition.
How do you figure six? You don't even know how many people are, are going to be in the houses? You don't know if they're all going to sell. I know that's not worst case scenario, six coming out at night or going out in the morning, I mean.
When we, when we do these studies and we identify the traffic that a project is going to generate, we utilize data that's published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. It's the federal guideline, it's the guideline that Mass DOT requires, it's the guideline typically any municipality in the Commonwealth requires that we utilize. So what we do is we use that data and we, they apply trip generation rates that tell us how much traffic a development will generate based on the type of use and the density of that use. So the, and the ITE manual is, is updated every few years and it's a whole host of land uses, there's office uses, there's retail uses, there's residential uses. And the data for residential uses indicates that a 42 unit development such as this development in the evening peak hour generates 21 trips. Now, I know you're going to ask me, well, that doesn't make any sense, there's 42 units, 21 trips. But this is during the, the busiest hour.
No, I get it.
Not everyone commutes during the same hour, you know, I may go to work at five in the morning, you may go to work at seven.
Right.
On a fire float, you may go to work at 10. If you work in retail, you may not leave your house till a certain time, so it's not as though there are 42 units, 84 people all go to work at the same time because we don't all commute in the same time, we don't all have the same schedules. Many people nowadays don't even leave the office, they, they telecommute and work at home, so. But the ITE data, which again is the, the industry standard, indicates that a project of this type of 42 units will generate 21 trips in the evening peak hour, 13 in and 8 out, so we're adding a total of eight trips leaving Vinyl Street entirely. Now, now all those trips actually go through to make the left. We're based on the distribution patterns, two are going to go right up Oxford Street and six of those trips are going to shoot across. So those six trips that will enter into the small area here, I'm sorry, I apologize, into that small area there, it's six trips added to what's there today, which is, uh, 294 trips. So that's our impact. There were 294, there's almost 300 vehicles making that left-hand turn onto Oxford Street southbound and we're going to add six. So certainly we're adding a, a, a certain level of traffic to that movement, but to suggest that we're breaking the bank or that we're causing the issue there simply is not, is, is not true. So what we tried to do is come up with an interim measure that will, in the, before a long-term solution is developed, and again, we don't know what that's going to be, it, it could be a traffic light, it could be geometric modifications, it could be a mini roundabout, it could be a whole host of issues that needs to be studied, it needs to be evaluated, but what we've suggested is that we add a new stop bar on Oxford Street southbound, just north of that crosswalk. And what that will do ultimately is it creates a situation where the people coming off of Vinyl Street no longer have to look for that courtesy gap because they're afforded the same opportunity to enter that turn bay as the traffic on Oxford because they're also on stop control prior to the intersection. So it's not only a benefit to the project, certainly, but it's also a benefit to residents that live on Oxford, on Vinyl Street today where they don't have that automatic gap that will now be afforded to them. And, and agreed, this is not a fix-all solution, there's no silver bullet here, that once you get into that turn bay, there are still going to be long delays when you're trying to make that left. But at least it creates a situation where there's a equal opportunity, if you will, with the traffic coming off Vinyl has just as much right to access that turn bay and isn't looking for a, a gap or a courtesy gap where someone waves you on. So we, you know, we've, we've looked at it, but again, in terms of impact, we're adding six cars to approximately 300. And I think that the solution that we've come up with, while it's not a, a cure-all, certainly creates a situation that's better today, both for our project and anyone that lives on Vinyl Street already.
Has that been run by the town?
We have not brought it to DPW, no. We've, we've, we discussed at the ZBA meeting and we, we agreed we make it a condition of approval if the town felt it was appropriate, but we have not vetted it with DPW yet, no.
Okay, my concern isn't so much the people coming out of Vinyl Street, but have you ever been over there like 4:30, 5 o'clock in the afternoon when the traffic backs up coming south on North Oxford Street?
Absolutely.
It was all the way up to Oda Street? So now the guy coming home from worsted, it's going to go to Vinyl Street, he's got a way to half an hour to get down the road to get in.
And, and that's, and again, that.
I'm just saying.
No, understood, and just to, just to make sure we're all on the same page.
I don't know how many kids are going to be in the, in this unit, I mean, there has been no mention of.
Right, well, just, just, I want to, I don't want to lose, lose sight of that last comment, that, that southbound left turn movement in terms of the vehicles coming home at night is, is three vehicles an hour, so that's every 20 minutes we're going to add a car to that, again, 300 car per hour movement, so it's, it's not a, you know, I don't want to, I hate to use the term, but this project in terms of the traffic at that intersection is, is a drop in the bucket. It, it's not, it's not a major increase. We're talking about, you know, a new car every 20 minutes on some movements, a new car every 10 minutes on the other movements, there's, there is no glut of traffic simply because of the fact the volumes that this project generates are relatively low, certainly in comparison to what's out there today.
I don't know, I've seen a lot of traffic studies in my life and I, I've seen a lot of them that weren't even close to being accurate. I do understand the thought behind the stop bar before the crosswalk, before you get to the Peninsula Island there where the old sports place used to be. Stop there to let people out of Vinyl Street through or across, they either go to Pinehurst, north or get down Oxford Streets south. But I don't know, I just. And we haven't had any impact on, and this isn't for you, it's for the engineers, is how many children are going to impact the school system? How is this going to affect the school buses coming out? Do they get down the neighborhood to pick up the kids? I'm not sure where they get picked up, but that could impact traffic, two school buses. The traffic could impact the school buses, is what I'm trying to say.
I would say that if, if the school buses are traveling down that corridor already today, I would, I would presume that we would be utilizing the service that exists. I mean, there are 80 residential units on Vinyl Street currently, there's 60 at the former Julie Bancroft School and there's another 20 single-family homes as you go down Vinyl into the loop, so.
The 60 in Julie Bancroft, they don't have kids, that's housing for over 55. So I'm worried about the number of kids in the development, so say it's 42 units, say there's two kids each, that's 84 kids.
Yeah, I don't, again, not a.
That's 84 cars. Just saying.
No, understood, but again, just, just to be clear, that, that at no point in time will this project generate 84 trips an hour. That would, that would assume that every home had two working adults and that every adult in those homes left for work during the same hour and returned home during the same hour. And this, and the ITE data, which is well established over decades of study, indicate that.
I understand what you're saying, but to assume that every home has two working adults is, that's not an assumption, that's a fact. You have to have two working adults to make ends meet.
Right, and what, and what I'm saying is.
Very rarely you have a home where only one, one adult works.
Right, and what I'm saying is that trip generation estimates that I've cited tonight are based on decades of study and, and literally hundreds of traffic counts conducted at existing residential developments to establish the rates to project what the traffic will be. And that, and the data simply indicates that, that those volumes have not met at all.
I don't see it in my head because I live over there and I know what it's like to get in and out of there, so.
No, and again, we're trying to, to at least provide a short-term remedy until there's a long-term solution there by moving that stop bar above and creating more gaps for that Vinyl Street traffic.
Okay. Appreciate you coming up.
Thank you.
Todd, you got something else to say?
Well, maybe, maybe not. I'll just let, let you keep going if you have additional comments or questions.
I think I'm about done unless you bring something, spark something in my head.
Okay. So, you know, we, you know, we did go through the zoning board of appeals process on, on the use and, you know, sat through and did, did go through the traffic and we did talk quite a bit about our impact and I think at the end of the day, they understood that our impact is pretty minimal on that intersection. Especially when you think about when the traffic's coming in and out. You know, we, we can't make any assumptions about how many schoolchildren might be in there. You know, we, we actually think there's not going to be a lot, frankly. These units are set up with, and we, we, we had the floor plans in here somewhere, we didn't spend any time talking about them, but.
Two or three bedrooms.
They're set up with a first floor master. You know, they're set up with two bedrooms up, upstairs that, you know, obviously, obviously could be for families. But, you know, when you, when you incorporate first floor masters, it tends to an older audience is what, you know, really I think we would see. Most people with young kids want to be on the same floor as them, they don't want their bedroom downstairs, their kids upstairs.
Todd, you got kids?
I have three, Mr. Chairman. Yeah.
You don't want to be on the same floor with the kids, come on.
I don't anymore, but I'm old now, you know, when.
No, I'm old.
When they're little and you need to be nearby because they, because they have needs that you need to attend to. But I think the point is, you know, we have no idea how many schoolchildren might, might be in there. We have no idea, ultimately, we use the ITE data that Sean talked about to, to give us an indication of what the traffic would look like. That's the best we can do, that's the best you can do, you know, we can all guess about how much traffic might be created. But the ITE data is what people in the municipalities, DOT, everybody else utilizes.
Right, it's the unknown that bothers me. What bothers me is I live over there and if I get hung up in traffic, I'm calling you, I'm calling you, and I'm calling you, and I'm calling you. How's that?
That's fine, I have no problem.
You just laugh, laugh at me, hang up the phone.
I'll be happy to hear you out and we can have a chuckle about, about it, but, you know, nobody wants to create traffic problems. I think a prob, a project like this wouldn't be successful in selling units if it was a huge problem. And so that, that maybe the market will, will, will tell us that we need to do something completely different, but we're pretty comfortable with where we are with the design of the project, the traffic impacts. You know, the suggestion that we made is, is a pretty small suggestion, but could be pretty powerful in terms of that intersection with the stop bar. You know, we're happy to address the technical issues that, that, you know, you raised. But I think, you know, ultimately, I think we can, we can nail all those technical issues with a plan revision set that can come to you as part of a condition of approval.
You can spark something. Just want to make sure I get the street name right. Oakwood Avenue. There's a drain that comes off of Oakwood Avenue down into your lot that's never been addressed and that was brought up in the first meeting. What are we going to do about that?
But we do, we do, we, we understood the issue.
It's not even on the plans.
Nope.
Why?
I think we, you know, we, we plan to have a, you know, there'll be, there'll be some sort of solution to that adopted at some point.
I accept some sort of solution, Todd. That's got to be dealt with because if it does wash out, there's going to be homeowners that had that losing over there.
I think it needs to be worked out in conjunction with DPW. Starts, it starts, it starts with a.
I'd like to hear from the DPW before I say go ahead, you know, be on your way. But that needs to be dealt with.
I don't know what the solution is at the moment.
So the, the drain that you're referring to, the, that's coming from town property dumping onto my property.
Correct, correct.
Yes, so that is going to be reworked and aimed back towards the wetlands. And they, the DPW says we might have a swell that goes through there. Whatever would work as long as it's not draining towards us. Currently, you know, the town is dumping water on my property, it's.
Correct.
Which doesn't show an easement of it. So there's no record, so the town is at fault for that, but we are willing to work with that and work that drainage over towards the wetlands instead of being towards the, the homeowners that are going to be there, so we're, we're going to redirect, but we have to work with, with the town on that.
But my problem is it was never put on the plans after it was mentioned in the first, when you first came before here.
Yeah, I apologize for that. You are, you are correct, we have brought that up a few times and I, I don't know why, but I, it will be 100%.
Give me time to think, Todd.
Being impacted by the current project, it's an existing condition, so I think.
Yeah, it's an existing condition that needs to be dealt with.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure we would typically show it on a plan set for this type of project, but I mean, I think we certainly could agree to a condition that we work with DPW to, you know, to ameliorate the, the condition that's there now. I think it's, it's pretty obvious from an engineering perspective that it's, it's needs to be that the water moves away from where the homes are and down towards the wetland area. I think that's what happens anyway, but it just might need a little, a little guidance and it needs a place to get softened because I think it comes out, you know, with, with inappropriate, uh, you know, measures there now. And it's really the town's fault, so that's why we're, we're kind of being gentle about it.
No, I'm just surprised it wasn't shown on the plans and how you're going to correct the issue. How you work with the town, I mean, I don't know.
All due respect, I'm, I'm kind of surprised that it doesn't show it on the town plans either. The town, the town has no history of it and they're, they're like, I don't know what it is, you know? So I, I understand it, but.
How long you dug in the street, I don't know what it is.
Yeah, yeah, no, I completely understand.
Right? I'll put the motion forward. May have motion to approve as submitted with certain conditions.
Close the hearing.
You may have a, a vote to close the, a motion to close the hearing?
Samute.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. May I have a motion to approve as submitted with certain caveats, like they got to go through the sewer department, see if they can get something from the fire department? The whole design of the sewer system with the air release manhole, size of the pump station, all that.
I'm moved to accept the site plan with the aforementioned conditions, approval from DPW, fire department and some, some metal being introduced as well. Uh, and an updated site plan.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Passes. Next on the agenda is decision 602 South Bridge Street, we have already signed that. May I have a motion to approve meeting, meeting minutes of 12, 10, 20, 24 as submitted?
I'm moved to approve the minutes of 12, 10, 24 as submitted.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
I'm not sure if I.
You can't, no.
Oh, you weren't.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
I myself, Jeremy's an aye. Any new business unforeseen by me? None. Town planner update?
None.
Um, may I have a motion to adjourn? Tonight's meeting?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 So Jeremy's an aye to the vote.